Alrighty, good afternoon, everybody. This is a long and awaited show. Uh, for me personally, and I'm hoping for everybody else, we are joined by.
Whoa. What happened?
I got some playing in the background. Sorry about that. Um, anyways, before I was interrupted by myself, um, long awaited guest and show, we are finally getting a full on thank advisory show. We've had Mr. Cliff Newman on. Uh, unfortunately, he was injured. He stepped on a landmine and did not spend all that much time with thank. And we had Mr. Leon on. And unfortunately, he was not able to speak at length. He is going to come back to talk about it. So we've not had a full encompassing thank show. Uh, and I won't even begin to explain. We've got a guess who's going to explain because he was there working with the organization. So we're going to get started. I hope everyone's doing well. And uh, we're going to get started like we normally do and find out the origin story of our guest, Mr. Fred Giltlow. So, um, everybody, if y'all have got questions along the way, go ahead and get them in and uh, we'll hit them all along, or if they're uh, at length, we'll, we'll save them for the end. So uh, let's go ahead and get started here. Um, oh, and before I start, I'd like to thank Mr. Fred's son for helping him get us on and get us set up today. This would not have happened without him. So huge thank to him. Um, well, Mr. Fred, as we uh, like to start off asking all of our guests, um, where were you born and raised and when were you born?
I was born in uh, nineteen forty-eight in New Jersey.
Nineteen forty-eight in New Jersey. So that means you would be.
Right now, seventy-seven.
My father's age, exactly. My dad was uh, December thirteenth nineteen forty-eight. So wow, he would be coming right around the corner there. Um, where uh, and you said, where were you born?
Uh, New Jersey.
New Jersey. Alrighty, northern guy. That's uh, that's been interesting to find out. Uh, you wouldn't, I don't know why you wouldn't think it, but there are a ton of New Jersey Special Forces veterans and, and legends. Uh, they come out of the, the, the New Jersey area.
Oh, of course they are.
Some in the water up there y'all got.
Yeah.
Um, did you uh, we always like to ask especially the, the Vietnam era guys considering how close to WW2, um, this, this was uh, did you have any family history in the military or?
Uh, yes, my uncle flew a B seventeen. My other uncle uh, drove a tank with a Patton. And my dad was an engineer and an aircraft. So that basically covers all three of my uncles.
Wow, an uncle with Patton, boy, that uh, doesn't get any bigger than that in, in WW2 right there. I'm sure he had some great uh, great tank stories. Still one of my most favorite movies of all time, Patton.
Yes.
Um, wow. So uh, did they uh, did, did, did you grow up? I, I can't imagine at a young age, but as you got a little older, did, did you hear much about the war from them ever?
You know, I, I didn't because my uh, Uncle Fred was named after. He lived in Idaho. And I was so young, I just wasn't, you know, the infamous, I wish I could talk to him before they passed.
Absolutely.
That's where the interest really came. But uh, my dad had gotten together the whole crew of my uh, uncle's B seventeen flight troop. From uh, he was out of Berry St. Edmonds. And they had put together a whole map of everything from Berry St. Edmonds, the missions they were on, the dates, the times. So interesting to see. I mean, they had to fly eight hours to the mission. What was that? But I always wish, you know, like everybody does, when you're younger and you don't sit down and talk to them and you go now, oh man, wish I could have talked to them, but.
If.
Yeah.
If I only knew now what I knew.
Right?
It's uh, uh, I, I've hit that so many times with uh, especially with my father and uh, it, it, it is. And that's why uh, to right off the bat, not to, to lay it in too thick, but uh, to thank you for, for coming on here and, and sharing the history and, and keeping it alive.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, so with you being a Jersey boy, um, I gotta imagine you're, you're, you're playing a little bit of sports growing up. You're maybe some basketball or, or something.
Wrestling and soccer.
Soccer. Okay. Well, heck, that's uh, that's uh, that's it. We've uh, we had one gentleman on that was uh, pretty good in soccer and actually got a scholarship to uh, an Ivy League school and sure enough, that didn't work out. Uh, Vietnam was calling his name and he ended up over in, in Vietnam. He turned down going to school and, and went over.
Oh, boy. Played soccer in college for a little bit too.
Oh, wow. Jeez.
Besides, the uh, administration said that I might need to go to Vietnam too. But it all worked out.
Where uh, where did you go to college at?
Oh, Franklin Pierce in New Hampshire.
Excellent, excellent. Excellent, excellent. And um, with you in, in uh, junior high, high school, um, what uh, what timeframe are we in here? Are, are you hearing much about this? Uh, the war, the conflict as it was known over in Vietnam already?
Yes. Uh, well, we gra- I graduated from high school in sixty-six.
Sixty-six.
So it was rocking pretty hard then. But yeah, went from there up to college and when I left college, I was, went to another college, but I just wanted to get into uh, join the army and go to Special Forces. So finally, after that, I enlisted in uh, March ninth nineteen seventy, down at wonderful Fort Dix with the infantry walk. And then went down to even more famous Fort Polk down in Louisiana. You walk under the big sign that said, welcome to Fort Polk, home of infantry, infantry men for Vietnam.
And.
And that was, you know, nice July and August time to be down in Louisiana. But it was the great, you know, the training was set up for all the villages, all the booby traps.
Tiger land.
Tiger land, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So um, you could enlist for infantry airborne, but you couldn't, you had to take tests at jump school. So finished up down at Polk, took the bus up to uh, jump school and they had, what they had the ground week, where you go around and do KP. I don't even think soldiers do KP anymore.
Only, only when they're uh, they're on the higher of the, the higher ups.
They can scoot them in there?
Yeah.
They used to, you know, for KP, they put a towel at the end of your bunk and wake you up at like three o'clock in the morning. Go down and do your deal there. And that was all ground week. Uh, then you went to tower week, which you go through all the different landings. And so I tell you, those black hats were ruthless. I mean, they had like a twenty-eight waist and they went right up from there.
Just that.
Yeah, just like that. And they had those big master blasters on their black hat, black hat. And you were uh, did not want to get involved with them because this is nineteen seventy. You, anything goes.
Oh, hands on.
Well, you gotta be strapped. You gotta be on it. Because I had a couple of friends that uh, they didn't pay attention. And you were supposed to sit when you're practicing your exits on a thirty-foot tower. You're supposed to sit there with your head looking right up at that exit. Don't look around. Don't do anything. So we're sitting there and here's a, here's a buddy of mine. He's sitting there playing with the pebbles at his feet. Exactly. So once they locked onto him, they just stealthily came up and grabbed him right by his chin strap here and started banging his head against the ground. But that for, you know, that got his attention. So anyway, uh, a couple of great instances like that. And they give you like ten seconds to get ready. You know, helmet off, door tags, this and that. And then you had to stand, um, be ready to go. It was uh, exciting times. So then finished jump school, got my jumps in. And then took the bus up to uh, Bragg because you have to take, I remember Keith said, you had to uh, go to a facility, take all these different tests, PT tests, all kinds of written tests. And then once you pass that, walk to uh, Fort Bragg. And they had uh, a ground week again. And then you went out and uh, jumped into Camp McCall because it was uh, phase one, two, and three. And phase one was all out of Camp McCall, of survival patrolling land nav. And then phase two was your MOS, military occupational skill. Mine was weapons. And so you went through that and they had a light and heavy weapons. So you go through light weapons first. And then you jump into your light weapons field training and you were loaded down with uh, I think a big weapons container and all kinds of equipment. It was nice because they had the uh, C one-twenty-three's. You were jumping in and I was lucky enough to uh, do the stand in the door deal. So you get to hang out at the door with it. I mean, an engine on a one-twenty-three is like right there. So it was uh, great training. But moved up there and as I mentioned before, now they call the final phase uh, Robin Sage. But back when I went through, it was Gobbler's Woods. And all really the old guys know that Gobbler's Woods. So finished up there. And then uh, you know, we graduated the course and they'd asked me to stay and work with the students.
That's right.
So stayed there, worked with the students and then got my orders for recon school. So went out and that's a six-week course and it's uh, all the instructors had just come back from the projects and they.
SOG, this is SOG, this is uh, notoriously the first teachers back to do this school where Eldon Bargewell, uh, uh, Moose Monroe and uh, I'm blanking on the other gentleman uh.
Everybody that went to SOG had went to this school. It wasn't the one zero school. That was a uh.
Camp, long time, long time.
Yeah. So it was like I said, six weeks long and they go through everything. I mean, you do your brief back, you do your land nav. You go out and when you call for an extraction, they had, the Hueys would come out. You could either, we usually went out on a ladder. But you could rappel in, sit down, but it was all a great training. So then uh, came home, got married and yeah. And actually our fifty-four year anniversary is November thirteenth. So it was great. The ladies are the best to put up with the uh, the soldiers out there doing it. So then went over, uh, I think I got them, we flew into Da Nang. And then all the guys from uh, recon school, you know, we grabbed our duffel bags and we were in one little spot. Because at this point, the fifth group had rolled their colors and they came home, they were home already. So the guys had to wear black hats. So from Da Nang, we got loaded, we went to Nitrang, where the headquarters was the fifth group. But um, that's where they had everybody muster. So we were there and they said, basically the projects are shutting down. Central and south had already closed up. And uh, Keith was still up at CNC, CCN. But they said, you could probably, you could go up there, but you still have to do so much training before they drop you into the jungle. So I went down to uh, Long Eye. So we were down in Long Eye, mostly as I said earlier, everybody went to Long Eye. But then they sent you to down to ten and down below and Fort Tui and they spread everybody out. And uh, when I was talking to Keith, he said, because he had such a short time left, you know, they sent him home. But the guys that had longer time, they sent them to the different uh, flank areas. So I can only remember Ralph because he was on our team. And I, that's the only one I can remember. There might have been more. So I got down there and uh, assigned to team three, six, one, you know, for B thirty-six and then team one. And got all my gear and everything and they, they were just finishing up training a battalion. So they were going out in the field. So they said, why don't you just head out with them and just shadow for a while for the field problem? And the way that worked, and I don't want to get ahead of myself, I'll go over the uh, the whole schedule of training later on. So out we go. And it was, these were battalion sized operations. You're talking a lot of soldiers. So off we go. We were in deuce and a half. So I think I sent a couple of pictures of the Cambos in the deuce and a half. So out we go. And uh, so we offload and anytime we ran into, I'll call them skirmishes because it was more like a hit and run harassing stuff. And uh, you know, some shots fired in the Cambos and get into it. But then they, I'd call them probably the VC because we never even got to see them. Then they just melt back into the jungle, which they were so good at. And all these areas were um, in uh, enemy contested areas. Just west of Fort Tui, I believe. But I'm looking at it now. When I was just a young sergeant going out there, I mean, I didn't have all this information. You know, I looked it up actually on the General Bores After Action Report to get the specifics. So we went out and it takes a while to set up a battalion, you know, because we had companies, myself and uh, Joe Gaitons. I didn't have any pictures of him, but he and I were assigned to one company. So we'd go get them in place and make sure that they had uh, once they had, they were all set up, we make sure that they, you know, had their fields of fires lined up. Because they had uh, we give them all organized with uh, like they were light infantry battalions. So they had, we trained them on mortars, machine guns. I think I sent you a picture of one of my young guys. Uh, it was M seventy-nine. His shower shoes hanging over his shoulder. That's young noon. He was a great guy. And I'll just throw this in there real quick because you had, they came over, uh, flew over in a C one-thirty over to our area. In the first, I think four days, they had uh, physicals, they get all their equipment issued. And we gave them all their weapons. Uniforms, rucks, and as the pictures come up, you'll see they have their helmets on. And what would happen, it first started out, uh, it was twelve weeks of the training. But then the need of rut came up, they moved it to fifteen. So we take the students and we uh, put them in formation and then we, whatever training they were going to, rifle range, thirty cal range, uh, M seventy-nine range, you know, we march them out there. And so that took a while. At one time, uh, because it was outside the whole camp where all the ranges were. So myself and it was Joe Gaitons were walking, uh, yeah, there they are in a truck, just getting ready to get off. You see all that equipment on there. And so we gave them the little batter boots, they're like canvas green boots. We gave them their boots. And you'll see the one, one guy there with like a turquoise, that's their Buddha clear uh, prayer cloth that they'd wear. And when we go out, they give us uh, booted ivory booted with silver and prayer claws. And I have a couple of the uh, prayer claws that I brought back with me. And they were uh, I hate to jump around here, but it's been only fifty-four years. So I'll throw it in there when I think it might matter.
It's fine.
So, once we got out there and we got them all set up, you know, we had to check on them. And we taught them about uh, interlocking fields of fire. Get their trip flares ready, get their claymores ready, get their thirty cows all lined up, ready to go. So that took a while to get them set up. And then we'd go back and they'd have, they'd have their chow and uh, they'd already gone through seven weeks of basic training. So then we go into the sixth week of six-day field problem. So we go out and that was six days. And that was like their basic training. And we had uh, we, I think I told you earlier, we got it all, got everything all set up. This is the first night out there. So I'm laying down and I just, I had a poncho liner, a sleeping bag cover, my jungle shirt, which of course was so good, so they don't have it anymore. So I'm lying there, you know, just have my weapon like this. And all of a sudden, we get probed and a trip flare is off. And you've got to really enjoy laying there in complete darkness when they open up, the Cambos open up with their thirty caliber claymores and all the buddies are just rocking and rolling with their M sixteen's. It'll, it'll make a believer out of you. That's for sure. So finally, you know, that was all stopped. And there was another time, there's only a couple of times, like I said, we did skirmishes, we get probed, got mortared. Uh, we had, we always told the, the young Cambos, don't go outside the perimeter. So now you have a big perimeter with a battalion sized group. So all of a sudden, I'm standing there talking to Sergeant, Master Sergeant Newhouse. He was one of those, I'll call him crusty old master sergeant, you know, none of the younger guys knew anything. So I hear this bum, bum, bum. And when you fire a mortar, it like, it's boom. But when it's coming the other way towards you, it's that don't, don't. So I said, oh man, top to walking them in us. He just, you know, more or less told me to shut up and get out of the way. But they stopped before they got right into the center of our camp. So that was uh, that was the one time. And apparently what had happened, a group of the Cambos, I mean, we call them Bodes, this is a friendly, loving name. Um, they walked out, they got, I don't know what they were going out to do, but they ran into the little, little bad guys. And so they fired them up. They raced back to us and threw that little bit of mortar fire. If there's such a thing as a little bit of mortar fire, right? Um, we stayed out there and another time, uh, we got probed again. And so Captain Mansky and Lieutenant Jellin, you'll see them, I sent a picture of those guys. They were dropping the mortars, but they weren't going off. So I just went to go over there when they fired, dropped a live one in there and it, it was like right over us. So we just all got on the ground and I think they fired a couple more and then that was it, quiet as it gets in the jungle. So that was uh, that was the six-day field problem. But we take them out. I think there's one picture of me in front of the Bodes heading out that I sent you and we had them all. Now that's uh, me on the left, Jellin on the right, Captain Mansky with the sunglasses on. And we were just, you know, with a halt, uh, trying to, you know, make sure we're going in the right direction. Set this crew up. And you can't see it, but that Australian smiley, I call him, no disrespect. He was uh, he's right behind Lieutenant Jellin, but you can't, you can't see him. He's like poking his head around there. That was, that was the main uh, leadership of team three, six, one.
With, with uh, while you had mentioned Australians, uh, that's another interesting aspect that Americans and Australians are, are the advisors for Cambodian troops.
Right.
In, in the organization.
Yeah, I don't know how they put that all together. You know what the uh, the magic of the people above do. They just, they just make it happen. So yeah, so that was uh, that was the six-day field problem. I think about covers everything. Yeah, there it is there.
That's a wonderful photo, sir. That is a awesome photograph.
Only, only fifty-four years ago. Yeah, but you see that, see the Cambos, he's got his M sixteen going. And I think we must have been going out in a platoon and Joe Gaiton is back in there somewhere. But this is one of the things that uh, we're heading out. And back then, like I said, you had to uh, talk to a forward air controller. We couldn't do, we could talk to the forward air controller, but we couldn't talk to any of the fast movers.
Oh.
Fire out there. And all of a sudden we hear a little whine, you know, forward air controller. I said, oh man. So now, here comes some fast movers like right behind them. And I'm going, this is, this is bad. So I call back and who gets on the radio with the new house? So I tell them, we got a fact, we got some fast movers rolling in here. Ah, they're not even close. And they're yelling at us right away again. He goes, alright, turn around and come back. Like we're little kids in school, right? Turn around and come back. But that was just one of the many unexpected uh, interactions that happened. So that'll uh, you know, that's those boom, boom to the fast mover. Oh yeah. So anyway, that's it for that field problem. So we came back. And now, after they came back, we got their leaders together and went over any deficiencies we saw. And gave them like a uh, next week, next uh, oh, the training, the A, the uh, advanced individual training. So we gave them another, let's see, seven weeks. Seven, yeah, because the whole program was fifteen weeks. And then the culmination of there, culmination of that, we do the twelve day field problem. And we, you know, we set up basically the same way because there weren't too many deficiencies. Just, you know, asking the guys not to run on the outside of the perimeter. So that went, that went pretty smooth. We did, like the one time you're going to get mortared or shot at is when you're unloading the trucks. I mean, they're sitting target. So myself, Captain Mansky, I think Jellin was with us. We went out and, and one of the pictures, uh, because it was the third mobile strike force, the Mike force. They had the red, white and blue scars and they, we give them in the floppy tiger hats to the recon guys. And we went out and we're looking, all of a sudden, they're shooting, we're getting shot at. So we hit the ground and, and it's nothing. So uh, you know, just little things like that. So we got the uh, recon group together and they were saying that they were, you know, moving out because they, so quiet when they get out and move. And the P, the bad guys might have been focused on the deuce and a halves unloading. And we just kind of leaked out with the recon guys. But that was uh, you know, another skirmish, I'll call it. And then we got set up again and we run the patrols. And basically we didn't have, we, we got out one time. Uh, oh, I, I enjoy this story, if you can enjoy the story because nobody was hurt. So Mansky, great leader, he used to play for the Houston Oilers. He was a beast. The Cambodians loved him. They looked at him like he was a giant, which he was. So he'd be always up front with the recon guys. I was back just the way the line of march set up. So we'd run across, we were coming across up to a river. And so all of a sudden, this Cobra gunship, if you've ever seen those bad boys in action, I'm sure all the SOG guys, I'm not telling them anything. Comes right over, right over the top of us like this. And he's letting those twenty and forty mic mics roll his tails up in the air. And that's another uh, moment. So everybody hits the ground. And I don't know who was talking to them. I'm not sure the communications, if, if Captain Mansky was on the radio and he was yelling before he just dove over the side of the river so he didn't get hit with some forty mic mics, but. And then it was gone. Then just flew away, that Cobra. But they are like right there. You can look up and see him looking around. Maybe because of the Cambodian troops, he didn't put it all together, you know, because we had the camouflage on. Anyway, that was uh, just luckily, nobody was hurt.
So then we. Wow.
Then we went out again. I think we had more friendly fire incidents than we did with the bad guys shooting at us. So we were out again, probably a couple of platoons, Mansky up front. All of a sudden artillery rounds are going right over us, landing out of about three hundred yards away. So here we are again. So Nancy goes, let's get out of here. So we turned around and went back to the camp. And another thing we used to do, that's why these things keep popping in my mind. I sound like them all over the place.
It's fun.
Get illumination and have them uh, registration points at different parts of the jungle where we were going to go. Because you never want to come back the same way you went out. So we'd do the triangle. And if we got lost, um, you know, we'd say, give me a Lumen RP one, something like that. So then that was it. Um, back to camp and we get resupplied. Uh, maybe once or twice and they come in with the uh, Huey and they had this project, P I Rs, Project Indigenous Ration.
Oh, yes, yes.
I think it was mackerel and rice. And they just kick them off. It was funny because the chopper pilot would call for smoke, but they would put that down on a posted stamp if you wanted them to. And they'd uh, yeah, another, the Campbell, the chop LZs, you know, they get in there. And uh, they enjoyed it because they use C four to blow the trees down. So they put their, they'd wrap the dead cord around, attach it to C four, you can do it some way. It wouldn't matter if I'd explained it anyway. And then they put kicker charge, whichever way you want it to go. You take a machete and chop a spot there, put the kicker charge in here. And then everybody out of the way. And you hear the Cambos kind of woo, you pee, bye, bone, one, two, three, four. And then I think they just get to three and couldn't wait to hit the clacker. That's what sets everything off on the claymores type thing. So they set this all off and boom, a tree go down and then they'd uh, you know, wait for the chopper to come in with your food. And they bring in water because they had to boil water. And they bring in water, cause they had the boil water and, uh, you know, they brought in the big five gallon jerry cans of water for the, uh, for our skies. So that was, uh, that was about it. And I think overall with Fort Twoing, Damitin and Long High, we trained seventy-eight light infantry battalions. That's a lot of troops. And like I already explained the field problem and how that worked. And so after that, after the Easter, uh, offensive, they changed the, uh, oh, there's Fort Twoing, okay, I wouldn't, I didn't get down to that much. So they weren't that far away, cause we used to drive in a Jeep down there interact with those guys. So after we finished and after the Easter offensive, the FANK mission trained, changed again. So I was done with the teams. And I got picked for one of these security training teams, which we went out to like thirty-eight highly sensitive ammo dumps. And a whole different, all over, uh, the different cores, I, two, three, four corps. And they gave us a C one thirty and a, a three quarter ton. And we went out, land, actually we went down, we landed at Bami Two at CNC South Camp. And that was all shut down with a couple, a couple of guys I knew there. So he's, uh, actually the one that souvenired me at Carf, Carf fifteen.
Oh, wow.
Carried around with me. So we did, we gave, uh, marksmanship and then toured the camp and tightened it up a little bit. And I think I might've done three or four, uh, different camps that we did, but we did the same thing. And then that, that was done. And they'd already closed Long High and Fort Twoing. But when I got back to Long High, everybody was gone. And the, uh, Sergeant Major, I guess, whoever it was. He goes, oh no, you have to stay and help guard the gate. Now they're Sergeant Major, the guy had gone home. I've been here a little longer than they had, but you know, so what? It's the army. Just get out there on that gate and work with it. So I'm, I'm highly flexible, flexible and motivated. So I'm sitting out there. Cause our interpreters, they were, had been trained by SF years ago. The interpreters we had. I don't know if I, I think I sent you that one picture of us standing out by the airfield. Um, it's Mansky, Ralph Dawson's in there. Lieutenant McClellan, whose dad was a general in the area, he flew in the same one time. And our interpreters are in there. So finally I'm sitting there and, uh, yeah, there we are. We got Mansky and McClellan with the sunglasses on. So it's Mansky, interpreter, McClellan. I can remember so long ago, but you think I can remember things this close. Here's Newhouse, I don't know what he's pointing to. And there's, uh, oh, that one interpreter back to the left of Newhouse is, uh, Sami. And the one in the, Ralph Dawson there, that's a doughboy that, uh, they're there. And one between Dawson and myself, I can't pull it up. I can't, they locked the chip up enough to bring it up. That's the airfield out by us. Oh, and another thing, that's the, uh, you can see the flash on. There was a picture of me training one guy on war.
I'll pull that one up. That's a lot better one. Yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, for some reason, I guess everybody was, because the fifth had folded, rolled its colors and going home, they figured there's no more SF in there. But this Colonel Ryback, he was running the program. So people found out that we were there. And, uh, that's the Cambodian flag, the Temple of Angkor Wat in my beret there. There's the three temples and the colors of the flag. And we got to go to the SF patch.
Awesome flash. Awesome.
It's a great flash. I actually have an extra one. I have the one on my beret.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. That's over in my, uh, room where I keep all my army stuff, where this album was that I dug these pictures up.
I, I can't thank you enough for also allowing us to show your photos. It, it's a, it's an awesome thing to be able to see you back in the day like this.
Yeah. Back in the day, right? So, uh, mortar training here, and I think I sent you one of the eighty-one training where they're putting.
Yes, sir. Pull that one up there.
And I sent you that one of me and, uh, uh, one of the Cambodian, a little Cambodian guy. Oh, there's, that guy on the right. He was the youngest guy, shortest guy in the battalion. These kids had to be twelve, fourteen. We had the real young guys. I can't remember his name. But this is where they got the eighty-one set up. And.
Bigger than he is.
Yeah, as big as he is. The guys we carried, I mean, we had a lot of old people too, cause they pulled instructors out of the colleges, schools and high schools. And we had to train, we were training them. And it looks like that might be where they blew up some, some of the LZ back behind us there. To get the clappers in.
Wow.
Yeah, there's another, another, I can't, I think I sent you a couple of pictures of little guys.
Yes, there, uh, there, this is a great one. And then there's another one of a, a fairly big Cambodian, but this is, this guy. This little guy.
That M sixteen, it's like a Kentucky law rifle. I mean, those ammo pouches, but he would, you get him in a jungle and he's all business. If he's smiling there, he's probably smirking more or less than a smile.
I mean, that is just amazing. Look at him in his gear.
Yeah. Oh yeah. Yep.
Gosh.
Yeah, a couple of, uh, younger guys.
How old do you think he, he was?
Twelve?
Oh my gosh.
I'd give him thirteen on a, on an older day.
Wow.
Yeah.
And he, here is, uh, the one you were talking about. There's a, uh, there's another in color photo that's good, but this is, uh, one of the, the larger guys. There's actually two of them, but this one, uh, i- is a fairly big guy. Big, tall as you actually.
Yeah, he's probably taller. Yeah, but he was one of the platoon leaders. And I think, uh, I gave him that snap length that he's got on his rifle. So he was all about, uh, you know, profiling. He's got his Buddha cloth around his neck. So that was about one of the few problems, just on the stop. And there's, uh, I think another one with the little guy, another smile, looked like he should be in nursery school. These guys have a lot, and we only, we were wishing we could go back with them. You know, get into it, but they said, no, no, you stay right here. Cause I think, uh, General Boway, I believe that's how I know how you pronounce it.
Yes, sir.
Early on, he was back, he was on that Cambodian delivery team. He was odd. He was actually at Long High as lieutenant for a little bit. And then he went, I don't know where he went, but, um.
He did, uh, he was there till seventy-five. What, what was the organization? Med TC or Med?
I don't know. I remember, oh, there's, yeah. Here's that young recon guy with his Mike Force scarf, his bandolier of, uh, M sixteen tonight. He's got something in his hand. I think it was, when he went out after some of the guys got fired up, I can, can never fi- figure out what that is. Some type of charge from a rocket or something? Anyway.
Oh, wow. I was gonna guess an animal of some sort, but now that you mention it, it might look like a rocket head right there.
Yeah. I'm not sure what it was. So yeah, that's one. A great, I mean, it'd be such a great bunch of kids, literally.
So what, uh, wha- what kind of watch were you, uh, wearing? A Seiko or?
No, it was a run of mail Timex probably.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know if you had one of the, the Sekos with the, uh, the watch and the, uh, wrist compass on the, on the same band or anything.
No, no, this is, uh, I didn't have that. I just had a regular watch. So, yeah. So after, let's see, after we did the security training teams, they had a lot going on. I think Test Force Mad, and that's where Cliff Newman got blown up down below. And that's when, uh, Fred Mick, we used to run up to Benoit, we'd take equipment back. And we'd just jump in a deuce and a half, you know, I'd ride up front, a bunch of Boz in the back loading the equipment. Uh, he was going back October twelfth of seventy-two. And he, they hit a mine and, uh, he was killed and, and Cambodians were wounded. He had them.
This is one of Mr. Leon's convoy photos, since you were mentioning convoys, uh, thought that was pretty cool with the skull across bones.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So that was, uh, that was that, uh, I think, uh, actually Cliff wrote a great article in, uh, VFW magazine. That I have, and that's how I knew that they were there. They must've been down in, uh, South Fort at Long High, cause they're two big camps. And, uh, I think he was down there. Lieutenant J, uh, Lieutenant Jellin, who was the first XO, he was the first group guy. And, uh, he came with us and, uh, good, good bunch. I don't think I'm leaving anybody out. Uh, Gaitan's, Crisilius. That's about all I can recall. And I have, I mean, I have some other pictures, but they're just with the recon guys, I should suggest, you know, cause they just love to be, they love the Americans. You know, they'd be right there like that young guy, the picture we just looked at. And there's a, there he is. You believe this? Look at the teeth. His teeth are nicer than mine.
Beautiful smile. Beautiful.
Yeah. I'm gonna tell you a quick story and another nice story that nobody was luckily injured. So we give them the grenade training. Yeah. Cambodians had two dialects, so you had two interpreters. So we had sandbags set up, not waste time. So we're lined up, maybe six. So here's the little guy you just saw. So they're going through the commands, you know, the old command, pull the pin. And I was like this. And I see that look in his face. So the interpreters go throw him, probably as far as you can. He's looking at me, looking at me. So my best Cambodian, I go throw it. Drops it over the front of the sandbags. So I'm there, what? So I grab him, down we go, right? And so the grenade goes off, sandbags, eardrums, sand, all covering, covering he and I. But he's there with that big smile on his face. And he reaches into his pocket and takes out a tiger tooth. And gives it to me as a souvenir. And I took it down to the village and had, uh, had a necklace made out for Carolyn, for my wife Carolyn.
That is amazing. Wow.
Yeah, we got a bunch of, I mean, Buddhas that they gave us. Prayer cloths, all kinds of items to keep us safe, which I worked on, I guess. I'm sitting here going over the prog- program.
I, I was just gonna say, you're here with us now, so it, uh, it, it did something for you. I mean, heck, gotta take what you can get.
Boy, tell me about it. So that, I think that was, that was it. After, I think Damitin closed out the last battalion. I'm not sure where, but they were the last ones. Uh, we'd already shut down. And when I came back from that, uh, security training team. Oh yeah, there you go. I don't know where. Oh, Damitin? Yeah, you got the flash and everything right there. Super.
Very cool. Very cool.
That was, uh, I think that was about it. So then came home. Carolyn picked me up in the airfare. We drove down to the beach. My nineteen fifty-nine MG eight that I got in high school.
Wow.
Spent a week at the beach, came home.
Beautiful.
Fifth grade teacher, awesome instructor, awesome person. So, um, I could've gotten a job. I'd have got to make sure my time schedule here. So I was in tree business. I was gonna open a tree company with my buddy. He moved to New Hampshire to go to the Geodesic Dome, so he drifted away. So I'm home and the phone rings. There's a guy I know, he goes, Fred, we're looking for cops. You wanna join? Sure. So I had to explain that to Carolyn. So anyway, that over, went over. Hard to go, probably could've gone over a little better. But anyway, uh, got that all done. Nineteen eighty-three, I went back into reserves and I was doing correspondence courses, cause I was a weapons guy. I go down to, uh, Bragg and teach them, cause we carried a Glock and I gave them tactical shotgun training. And I do that and I stayed with it and at the weapons committee. So then, you know, I go down and stay with the program. Then nine eleven. So I, I get a phone call. Oh Sergeant Gilso, you've been activated for two years. Fifty-four, thank you. So, are you gonna teach some things or what? I had to go down and once again, Carolyn, being the great person she is, I had to tell her that. So, and they give you the orders. You know, you'd be here in a week, no questions asked. It's not like you can, uh, oh, I can't make it today. So anyway, went down. And I thought I'd go to the weapons committee, which is back at Bragg now. But they had opened up the SEER school, Survival, Evasion, Resistance and Escape, which they didn't have when I was going through. So, uh, Nick Rowe, Colonel Rowe, who was five years to freedom, got captured down in, uh, Four Corps. And they kept him in a cage and was just ruthless. So went that one down there and I was talking to my first sergeant. Cause there's things now I can't talk about for SEER, which is so I'm talking to him. I said, hey, Tom, you know, uh, both our sons are Eagle Scouts. I run a lot of survival trips with them. He goes, oh, go to survival. Just like that, I got to reprieve, cause some of those other areas are not the best in the world. So was at survival and stayed there for my two years. Uh, got a promotion to EA. And finished up there. It was nice, cause Jeff, Jeff, who you saw here, uh, he was, uh, he went into Iraq with the eighty-second in oh-three. And he, you know, his career, he just, he just finished after two years, after twenty years. You'll have to jump with him, which is so cool. Um, not ma- not many people can say that.
Not at all.
No, but it was, it was pretty awesome. So then, uh, finished, like I said, finished that up. Came home and I could've gotten, uh, cause I had had twenty-eight years on the police department at this time before nine eleven. And I was the range master there, teaching, uh, all firearms and policies. So I called around and, you know, I come, oh yeah, Fred, yeah, we can. So then I kept getting calls from the guys from survival. Oh Fred, you gotta come down, man, we're missing you, the instruction, come on. So Carolyn was so good, she said, uh, all right, let's go. So two thousand four, she didn't say it like that. Uh, maybe she did say it like that. So two thousand four, we went back down and bought a place here in Pinehurst. And stayed, I taught for ten years. And finally, you know, when I was sixty-five, I said, you know, I don't wanna be that old guy up on a podium. Oh, there I was, you know? But the kids were so good. They'd go, Mr. Gilso, how old are you? So, but someone, that one picture you have, I mean, reading the Cambodian had got it and put it in a frame and put it up in the classroom. And they, oh man, look at you. So it worked out well. It, it worked out so well. Everything. This year program was awesome. Oh yeah, there it is, that young guy. But, uh, yeah, they put that up and they'd all look, how old are you? Anyway, that, that basically, I think, covered everything. So if anything I didn't cover, if anybody has any questions, I don't know if they will.
Oh, oh yes, sir. We've definitely got some questions. I mean, that, uh, that's amazing. And again, I'll say, i- it's really, uh, it's really a breath of fresh air. We love our SOG men. We love our, uh, A-Camp Mike Force men and the such, but getting to learn about FANK and, and the other aspects of what was going on in the war and the other branches, not branches, other avenues of combat that were going on that y'all were facing, that not a lot of people sadly know about past seventy-one, seventy-two and, you know, on into the, to the, to the NBA taking Khantum and, and the Easter offensive. I mean, uh, th- this is just a, a breath of fresh air, getting to, to learn more about what our, our men, uh, were doing in, in South Vietnam. It, it's, it's amazing.
Yeah, you don't hear too much about it, that's for sure.
No, and I'm, uh, I'm, that's one thing I'm, I'm trying to change is trying to get, uh, as many of you gentlemen, not only to, to speak with and inform me personally, but will be open to, to come on and share with us, because it's a, uh, it, it's an avenue, uh, much like SOG that, uh, like you said just a minute ago, it doesn't get spoken about, uh, very much. And as far as I know, except, uh, guys, I'll mention. uh, guys, I mentioned to show you all earlier, but, uh, one of the best books on Vietnam Special Forces ever, Shelby Stanton, uh, it's got a photo history book with it. It has great write-up on UITG and FANK. And Colonel Francis Splash Kelly has a great book that, that talks strictly SF and has a great write-up on them as well. Um, but the only book I can think of that covers FANK from a personal tour standpoint is from an Australian. And I'm blanking on the name, but a friend just sent it to me and I'll put it in the show notes, but I, I really wish them guys would, uh, would, would put out some FANK books because it's highly interesting. And I think like we were speaking offline, that y'all's history needs to be documented because we're not going to have y'all much longer, unfortunately.
No. No, and I've never been in touch with any of the guys from, uh, Long High. I knew Keith, I think we went some portion of training. We got to know each other and we talked back and forth. But that's, uh, that's about it.
It's, uh, and guys, let me show you another thing. Uh, I've got Mr. Fred actually brought up on this page. And, uh, it's a great resource, me being, as y'all know, I research everything, uh, fifth group related in Vietnam. But this is it called Who's Who, uh, they have them for SOG and the other groups of who was actually in, uh, the, these organizations. And this is who's who's a FANK. And as you can tell, this is the FANK, uh, the Long High Training Center, LHTC. And if we just go down here, well, up here, uh, in the officers, you'll see, uh, Ken Bowery's name and, and several other men, uh, Mr. Dawson, uh, I'm gonna show a photo of him in just a moment. He was a CCS vet that I've got a photo of that, uh, Mr. Fred knew, but um, Mr. Fred, and of course I'm gonna, there we are. Mr. Fred mentioned right here, Sergeant twelve one seventy-one to eleven thirty seventy-two, a light weapons man. So it, uh, it lays out every training center and, and where the guys were at, who was there. As I mentioned, just a ton of SOG names. There's Ken Bowery popping up where he was working. Um, and actually we had forgotten, um, but one other name, David Rapp, there's a, a bunch, um. You actually, uh, knew Mr. Fred Sabatowski.
Oh yeah, we went down to visit him, um, because he, he was down there. I don't know if he, uh, after that awesome Medal of Honor. But it was nice just to shake his hand. You know, Medal of Honor winner. And some of, you read some of those seventeen Medal of Honor winners for SF in Vietnam. You read some of them, you, it'll give you chills. I mean, how did they get back from there? A lot of them didn't come back from there, but it's quite, uh, quite the history.
A- absolutely. And, uh, I, and I can, from all I've heard, he hated it, but knew, uh, considering like he had done and Bob Howard, that you can't be sending men that, that earned the big blue into, into harm's way anymore. They, they gotta stay back. So, uh, I, I know he was glad nonetheless to be there helping and working and, and, and not being completely left stateside. But I know he was, wishes he was out there mixing it up and training with you guys. I know for a fact. Um, but, but that was really interesting. Um, one of our questions dealt with while we're still into the, the, the FANK and Legends aspect, I'm about to bring up the CCS photo, um. Did you, uh, did you have any, uh, contact with General Bo, or I should say Captain at the time, Captain Bowery while you were in the, uh, organization?
I probably went up and shook hands with him, but it's funny, when I got called back to active duty, uh, he was a, I think he was a Colonel. Uh, and we were out on a jump together. And, you know, they had the VIP stick. And, uh, you know, someone says, oh yeah, Colonel Bowery over there. So I walked over to him, hey sir, Fred Gilso. Was it Long High when you were down there? So he said, oh, you know, great. Shook my hand and that was nice of him. But that's the only time I saw him after, afterward. But it's amazing, the short, the, uh, oh, look at him, LT, the much.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great shot.
It is a great shot. It's like a, yeah.
I swear, I, I love the fifth group beret, but, uh, FANK in the forty-six Special Forces Company, uh, to me had, had the, the best berets, uh, best flashes, uh, uh, that, that ever. Uh, there, there's something about them, uh, utilizing, I know fifth group utilized the Vietnamese colors and such, but the way y'all fine tuned it to, to, to y'all's, uh, Cambodians and then the, the forty-six in Thailand. It's just, I love that.
Yeah.
And did you mention there was a, a bit of a history? Uh, I couldn't remember, um, i- if you said y'all had gotten the okay or the, the FANK flash was always that? Or did that come out while y'all were there, especially that y'all got the okay to put the flash?
I think what happened, I mean, if you'll read that General Bowery's after action review, it was just saying because he just has in there that it was found out that SF was still in there and the flash was approved. And that's all it says. So I don't know who approved it, but, um, I'm glad they did. So.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna bring that up to where, and I put it in the show notes, uh, this is, uh, I believe then Colonel, as you mentioned, or he might have been a general by now, but this is the layout of FANK for foreign internal, uh, defense operations and then, uh, UITG, the training group. But I'll go up to the top here where you guys can see, um, Lieutenant Colonel. This is a historical study through seventy-one of seventy-three by Lieutenant Colonel Kenneth Bowery, United States Army.
That was at the War College, his paper he had to do.
Uh, that's, uh, what a, what a write-up on that. And I've managed to read a little bit. And I will, uh, I've linked that into the, the chat, but I will put it in the show notes in case you guys would like to read it. It, it's absolutely worth reading.
Somewhere about the authorization and Colonel Rybat, while I'm thinking of it, uh, Martha Ray.
Oh yes, sir.
On SF, so she comes to our camp. She, anytime SF was in Vietnam, she'd be there. So she comes in, what a pistol she is. She's sitting on the bar drinking half a glass of vodka. FM cheer to somebody she didn't like. So everybody's singing along. I wish, wish I'd gotten a picture with her, but, uh, yeah, she was pretty sweet. Just, uh, one of the troops.
Wha- what a lady from all the stories, not only, as you mentioned, uh, being a, a pure SF lady, but she would go out and visit all the other guys, the lack of a better term, as they're called, legs, the grunts and, uh, but the way she supported the SF, SOG and, and FANK guys is unrivaled. I mean, we've got photos of her in, in the, in the Contum and, and CCN club, just hooting and hollering with the guys, having a, a good old time.
Yeah, it was good.
That's, uh, that's amazing. I, I wish you would have definitely got to, to meet her because it sounds like, uh, she was quite the lady. And I actually know one guy that she was world famous. I'm sure you've heard about this, about saying, hey, if you're ever in California want a place to stay, uh, look me up. And I know a few of the guys that took her up and, uh, they, they, they stayed for two, three weeks with her and she never even asked them to leave.
Right. No, well, they, on, on Bragg, when I first came back down here, they used to have a a set, a separate room, Maggie's Team Room. And all patches and all kinds of great memorabilia. And then they just, you know, the way it goes, it all went away, which is a shame.
It, it is. Uh, an entire portion of her house, I've got some photos from some of the old guys from, uh, that, that went over and were great friends with her. One was her bodyguard for a while. Um, literally an entire side of her house, a great big old house, is full of plaques from the various units. And then the other two rooms are nothing but Special Forces and then SOG memorabilia, photos of what you guys, uh, uh, it, it's just, the love she had for you guys is just uh, you, you can't, you can't put it into words, honestly.
No, she's buried on Fort Bragg.
I was fixing to say, that is the only woman and that is the reason why she is the only woman buried amongst Green Berets at Bragg.
Yeah.
What a lady, what a lady. Um, okay, um, questions here? Um, if you're able, you, you mentioned you're not able to talk much about SEER. Um, there are a few dealing with it. You'll have to just tell us and it's fine if you can't, um. Did you, uh, have contact with Colonel Rowe at any point in time? Passed away.
He got, um, assassinated in Manila. Uh, no, I didn't, he wasn't there when I was there. He, he down there earlier.
Terrible, terrible incident. Um, and did, did you, just personal? Di- did you have any thoughts or ideas of what, wh- what happened to Colonel Rowe down in, down there in the Philippines?
Yeah.
As far as I know, it was that group they called the, the Sparrows or whatever that kill team or whatever you want to call them, they were, that they happened to catch his car and the rest unfortunately is history.
Right.
Um, but I owe you an email and a pros, pros trip to Vietnam brand by for. Oh, okay, man. Excellent. Like, I definitely want to go to Vietnam one day. Um, light weapons man. Uh, yes, Mr. Fred is a light weapons man. What, uh, if, if you didn't go, uh, if you weren't going to be a light weapons, what, uh, what was your secondary MOS that you were fond of?
Maybe engineer.
Blowing stuff up, maybe?
Yeah.
I thought that would be pretty cool. Uh, when, um, the, the SEER school was, uh, stood up, uh, uh, Colonel Rowe and, and everything, uh, starting it up. Was it originally, I ca- I considering it was post-Vietnam and, and everything, was it strictly still geared toward, uh, shall we say jungle communism-like, uh, surviving? Or did it quickly, did y'all start realizing we're going to be facing desert-like or o- other types other than Russian and communist, uh?
To whatever the, uh, whatever the terror was. They'd adjust to what they needed it to be for whatever the times were.
Excellent. Glad to hear that it's, it's easy to be adaptable in such situations for guys. Um, did, uh, n- now is SEER, uh, is that a strictly special operations, Green Beret slash Air Force Rescue, Navy SEAL course? Or do grunts, uh, 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 can anybody go to SEER school basically?
Yes, because I know the Air Force has their own SEER school. Um, Navy has one up in Maine. And I know we put one together at Fort Rucker. And I don't think that's any secret. We did it a long time ago. And that's, because we used to have the um, I'm gonna bag out of that for a while.
That's fine, that's fine. No, no problem. That's fine. We've had some.
Portion is survival. You know, everybody loved that. Not so much the other portions. Survival was good.
Absolutely. And, and don't worry, uh, we've, we've had guys on that aren't able to talk or, or don't feel like they need to share. Do not worry about that. That, that's why I said, if you can't, just say no. Um, did, um, Fort Rucker, I, I, as I said, I live about five minutes from the front gate. Now was that, if you're able to answer this, was that geared for aviators only?
I don't know. I just know we helped set it, bring it up to level C. I don't know what you were, um, because I know our people. I know it's in the if you're just a regular army, army guy, you can put in for it. I went to SEER level A.
Looks like he's from an ODA, uh, our viewer here with this.
There's a difference that I don't want to get into between, I know what level C is. And, uh,
I don't think that one can be answered. Our various SEER courses and leveled outsources to private training groups. I don't know if that needs to be answered.
Yeah.
Um, yes, ODA, I, absolutely. Some of the stories I've heard of, uh, of her operating on young men that she adamantly said, take me into the firebase, I'm going in. Because they didn't, they only had one medic and the work she did, just, just, well, well, if it doesn't bring tears to your eyes, then you, you don't have a heart.
Right.
Um, so with, um, y- y- you had mentioned you had gotten, if I remember correctly, y- you had gotten out and then you came back in. Did you come back into a uh, active duty SF or did you go back in as, uh, National Guard Special Forces?
Oh no, I just went to, uh, right to the SEER school, which was SWCC, the training group.
Okay.
They, the, um, the IMA Flash Institute, well, it was back, Institute of Military Assistance. That's all instructors. And that's, if you're into teaching, um, I'm trying to figure, I don't want, anybody teaches, um, in the SF community or any of the courses, they're all assigned to the Special Warfare School, which is SWCC. So I got to go there. So I was there, uh, attached to them.
And the, uh, Special Warfare would be the JFK Special Warfare Center?
Yeah.
Excellent, excellent. Um, what, uh, wi- with all that you've, uh, and guys, go ahead and get your questions in here, um, uh, with, with all that you have, have accomplished and look back on, um, what, what would you say, uh, because SEER is a, a huge deal? Um, what would you say was, was your most rewarding, um, job that you, that you took part in while, while in the service? Was it you training, uh, and, and helping fight communism? Or was it helping, uh, young men that were about to continue what you were doing in the past? To make sure they would be able to survive and, and continue on?
I think both.
Both.
I loved working with the Cambodians because they were just loved all of us. And then with the young soldiers going off, because I got called back in two thousand one. And actually the, one of the oldest guys to go through the SEER program. So that's, uh, yeah, I enjoyed all of that. And now it's, I work, I teach, uh, survival, uh, merit badge to scouts, which, which is so cool. So, because I go in, because you have to build a fire. So everybody loves the bow and drill for fire. You know, you get this stick and rub it like that and, uh, they like that to fire. So I would go in for two nights, two other nights and teach fire building. All the different ways, because to get the merit badge, you can't, you know, no matches, no lighter, everything natural. And everybody had to get the fire. And then the second or the third night I go in and teach shelters. Because you, you know, how to build, usually the lean tube, but the, uh, the debris hut, it's just like a big squirrel's nest. But there's, you know, elements to it to keep it as warm as it's going to be. And you have to spend the night in it. But that was, uh, that was a lot of fun, just to see, uh, see those guys out there. Cause you got the real little ones just getting in. And then the guys going for the eagle, which is, uh,
The big dogs.
Yeah, yeah. And to see them. And they have a great program here. Uh, up at, our troop is up in Bass. So it's a, a good bunch. Yes. And actually, uh, one of our grandsons just got his life two nights ago. He's, uh,
Wow.
Sixteen, one of the twins, yeah. So Jeff's very involved. He was a scout master for a while. He's the one that helped me get through this with my limited techno, which is very limited. So, yeah, so doing that is great. And just to keep the, you know, keep the skill level going. Cause I have all my stuff and I always go out and make sure and get it, do a good bow and drill, get the coal, blow it up. Because we had to go out to a bunch of, uh, we actually got called to the Order of the Arrow, which is a special order in scouts, you have to be elected to it. And they had, when I was at Survival, they had the, uh, Order of the Arrow for Southeast North Carolina. And we went up and put the whole dog and pony show, if you'd say. It was all the survival stuff. And the kids, everybody loves the fire. It's like you need your stuff.
Absolutely. Especially when you get it going with that, they're, oh.
Oh yeah, that's good stuff. And when we went out to a Survival, train the trainers out in Kansas. And the newspaper would come around and they always wanted, you know, that's what they want to see. So you're always on the spot there when the camera's on you doing that, you know, you can't blow or even in, when you're teaching. You know, you gotta get it done, you know? But yeah, it was good, great, great life. Great life, that's for sure. Yeah.
Um, we've got, uh, one or two more questions and I was going to show some photos that I thought would, uh, capture the, the FANK atmosphere pretty good. Um, you're, uh, uh, h- how long have you been associated with the scouts and, and teaching? Because I can only imagine, God, if, uh, if I had a scout, uh, leader or an instructor that was a, a FANK Vietnam Combat Vet and a SEER instructor, boy, I, I'd be there with bells on every, every week, every meeting.
Well, originally back Well, originally, back up in Jersey, uh, Troop Nine, I had both our sons, Hunter. He and his wife are lucky, down here, they live in Asheville. And Jeffrey's, you know, right up the road, you saw Jeffrey, but we we get all the high adventure trips, I mean, Philmont, rescued a guy in Minnesota. That was awesome. Yeah, just with all our experience. But anyway, I'd go in. And for the survival trip, we'd always go up in the winter to the mountains up here. And I taught them all the land nav, the topography, you know, it was so nice. The pace count. And we went up to one of the camps and we, I'd go in and, you know, we'd go over every different things. Had distance between contour lines, elevation, section, resection. And it was nice in the winter. We grew up and they figured out their pace count. And so, you know, they'd take off and you know, you'd go, your pace is smaller going uphill, longer going downhill. So they take off, you know, they orient their map, they get going. Because there was no, no GPS or nothing. Which to me is great for that. So they, we take off and we get to the spot and it was one or two steps off the pace count. And they were livid how great it was. No, they were excited. So then you had the mountains. And you know, when there's no leaves or anything on the trees, you can orient your map and see that everything. So then they do the resection. Or you're just shooting azimuth back and you're right there. Just all all good stuff. And then the camp uh, director, she was big into Falconry.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, amazing. She got us two rabbits. So we teach them, you know, all how to clean them up and they roast them over the fire, build their winter shelters. And it's funny because this is, this is a while ago, a while ago. We all, all the trips, when we get together with the scouts. That's all they talk about. Oh, man, Mr. Gilson, remember that back in the day going on? That's her favorite, favorite saying. I said, yeah, I, I can remember a little bit. It was, it's great work with them. So that's brother years ago. Jeffrey's a little older now. And I think maybe nineties, I started working with the scouts up in Jersey, teaching survival. But then we ran the uh, always running the winter trips, which were good. So and then uh, we moved down here. And Jeff and Colton, he got his life the other night. So I'd go in and they'd ask me to come in and teach the Wilderness Survival Merit Badge. And everybody, you know, I had to spend the night in your shelter, get their fire, which they always uh, seem to get. So it was, it's great. Yeah. Yeah.
That, I mean, that that is just too cool. And I mean, that that's the kind of stuff uh, that that young men need to be doing. What what that that I believe is is one big problem with what's going on today. Kids who involved in their in their phones and such. Kids need to be out doing something like this, learning something, doing something that not only is going to benefit the community, but it's going to benefit them by learning tasks that they may not think is is vital at this point, being a teen, a younger, young adult. But i- i- it's just going to make you a man. And I, we're missing stuff like this. I'm glad to hear someone like you is taking an interest in the young people to 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 right the wrong of of social media and what else is going on.
Yeah, but it's it's so much fun because when the kids are up and they have to get their fire for the merit badge. They're cheering each other on. Come on, you can do it, you can do it. And once they get that fire, it's, you know, their eyes light up. And they're, oh, yes, I got you're dancing around and everything, but.
That's that, that that's, that's great stuff. I can uh, I can see why that uh, that that that's a highlight in in your life right there. Those kids that you've done that with, I can only imagine the young men there, they've become and are growing into be, it's, that's just fantastic. I wish it was more stuff like that going on. Uh, but there is, there is an uptake. I I have been reading around about people like yourself, Special Forces veterans, uh, starting to do their own Boy Scout stuff. And it's very interesting. Um, Josh was curious, uh, did you by chance uh, ever cross paths or work with uh, the Joint Personnel Recovery Center?
No, the only thing is, they ran the three, at the time, there were three SEER schools. And they'd always come out to check, to make sure we were teaching all, they put all the courses in to our program. They'd set up the POI. And then they'd come out and uh, you know, sit right in your class and they'd sit right in the front with the flipboards, making sure you're covered and everything. I believe that's what he's talking about.
Uh, this is the group uh, that was formed in Vietnam that was searching for downed pilots and so, okay. Yeah, uh, some of uh, some of the Covey guys and some of the other SOG guys went from NKP over there. Major Jim Grimshaw and and stuff like that. I think it was literally uh, uh, SOG-esque unit, I think it was a part, it was a part of SOG, one of the ops. And it was a a Marine Colonel and then Air Force and Army guys. And I think their whole mission was to search for PO uh, downed pilots and remains, if I if I remember correctly.
I never worked with that.
Did um, that's a weird question. I'm, and it brought brought and even or this is a weird question and that question brought it out of me. Did FANK ever get a uh, a bright light-esque mission to where y'all were out in the field and maybe a a pilot went down y'all were working with and y'all had to to maybe go get him or or anything like that?
No, nothing like that. No.
Okay. Um, alrighty, uh, I had some people wanting me to show off some uh, some other FANK photos that I had. And I've got uh, one or two that I thought were interesting. This is actually guys in the bush during FANK that I thought would uh, show a little bit of what the terrain was like y'all were training and working in. I'm not sure if this is outside Phuketui or.
Well, I think all the, all the field training operations went up uh, west of Phuketui. And that's, to me, that's like three core central. Because if you look at that picture of Mansky and Jalen and myself, it looks like we're just standing right in front of there. The three core jungle.
And I'm, I'm curious on on what that might be. I almost looks like you're gonna, no, it doesn't look like a grenade. I can't figure out what he's holding in his hand.
Oh, okay. I see a canteen cover with the two brass snaps.
It's not a gun barrel.
I don't, I don't think so.
Maybe it could, it can't be a grenade either. That's way too big for.
No, I don't know.
Very interesting. Um.
I had one picture of me in the, out in the jungle, but it's so thick, you can more or less see the Cambodian.
This uh, this is a famous photo and those that follow Jason Economos uh, saw where he credited me. Uh, this has been going on for about thirteen years, trying to figure out if these were SOG men. And we finally figured out this is a FANK team right here. And this gentleman with the, I think that's an M fourteen uh, rifle with a suppressor. Um, is the same gentleman right here. So I'll have to show that to everybody. Um. Did, did you guys uh, carry long rifles or was that just the him messing around, carrying something like that?
I don't know. No, we just dressed in the usual BDUs and uh, carried M sixteen, except for the M seventy nine guys. Oh, did you show that picture, that one M seventy nine? Guy I sent, I sent to you, the little guy?
I think, let me, yes, the the little short, short gentleman?
Yeah, he's, and he's just taking a rest in a bush. He's got the M seventy nine in front of him. And his shower shoes over his shoulder.
Actually, I don't think I have that one downloaded. I'll have to see if I do. Um.
Okay. No, but uh, we, we didn't wear any Tiger Strikes or anything.
Some pretty nasty uh, jungle as well.
Yeah, that's, that's why we put the registration points up, in case we uh, got disoriented, is that the right word?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, sir. Um. Were uh, were you guys carrying huge ammo loads like the the SOG and LARP guys or?
No, no, we carried like the basic load that we had and uh, like thirty round mags and then a basic load, maybe I'm not two hundred, I'm not sure how it is. We loaded up the uh, thirty round mags and carried them.
Boy, those thirty rounds were probably amazing, uh, having those uh, from.
Yeah.
Those eighteen or twenties, I mean.
Yeah.
And Kar fifteens were uh, were were guys that just had them from SOG or wherever? If you could trade them, would they pop up and and you get them?
Yeah, that picture of uh, Jalen's carrying a Kar fifteen of Mansky, me and Jalen. Here's Ralph. I think that's just dust and dirt in his hair.
Ah, okay.
Right in the front. We usually go to the front, one or two guys. Here's one of the interpreters behind him.
Great scarf pick. And guys, this is uh, one of the CCS gentlemen, or one of the SOG gentlemen that uh, thank goodness, uh, I I happened to see this photo and kept thinking, I I swear he looks like a SOG gentleman. I know that uh, photo's been floating around and sure enough, there is Mr. Dawson right there at CCS. I thought that was cool, getting to to put a name to a face and also realize he was with both organizations, so.
Yeah, that's a great picture, Ralph.
It it absolutely is. Uh, that's one thing you guys uh, that the Vietnam guys will always get credit for. Y'all uh, had some of the most cool photos known to man. Um, just, just something about the Vietnam era aesthetics, I suppose. Uh.
Yes, yeah, that brotherhood.
And this was a good shot and I'll uh, this will be the last one. I'm not going to show you every photo. You were there and I I got time to show these to other guy, uh, to the the fans while we're doing, doing a FANK video show. But with this, uh, what it would look like when you guys would be out and about on a rest break, this is Mr. Leon Sonnenberg's team right here.
Yeah, yeah, here's the sixty mortar. M sixteen, what else we got here? You know, that's basically how our guys. Look at all those faces. Yeah. Leon Sanders, that was his name?
Leon Sonnenberg.
Sonnenberg?
Yes, sir.
Tom Battin or Phuketui?
Phuketui. Um, I'll verify, but I'm uh, with pretty much certain that he was at Phuketui because the, some of these shots were outside Phuketui. So I'm just going to put it together that he was with uh, oh, and that's uh, McFarland. I forgot about that. He was a uh, gosh, I forgot where he came from. He wasn't SOG, but I think it was Mike Forth. He was another uh, solid operator.
Yeah.
Um, okay, guys. Well, unfortunately, uh, if y'all don't have, oh, I had a question because somebody was asking about all of the AP APCs showing up in in photos. Did your group, uh, what what was the significant of uh, armored personnel carriers with FANK?
I don't know, maybe they were just, uh, they had them down at Phuketui. I didn't even see any at our camp.
Oh, wow.
We didn't use them at all. I know we marched out. Oh. That one story I meant to tell you, uh, we were marching the troops out to uh, training. And uh, Joe Gaten's and I, and while the boats were getting set up, one of them walked by us and tripped the bouncing bedding. And it went, you know, they're supposed to explode, like a big soup can. They're supposed to explode, explode at like waist high. But this one just went straight up. It was a dud. So I'm uh, happy about that. So we'll EOD and they came flying out and blew it up.
Holy cow.
Because we kept everybody inside the camp, but then all the tra, all the ranges were wide open for booby traps.
Jeez Louise, jeez Louise. Um, and someone uh, had just put on my Instagram, not in here. What would be the uh, and Leon wanted me to show this off and ask if maybe you knew what this was. Uh, he seems to think this was the FANK bar. And I'm guessing with all the different forty-six, fifth and not sure if that's seventh or eighth. But uh, he seems to think this was the Phuk uh, Phuketui bar. And I'm inclined to think it's FANK because the camo patterns.
I don't know, that's, I mean, we had a pretty sweet club. But I don't, it could be. And I was never in in that club. But I see, yeah, the forty-six company, fifth and could that be the IMA Flash up there?
Oh, I bet that is. I didn't even think about that being.
Yeah, it could be.
That's interesting. Looks like that's a nice bar though, cement bar with a wood top. You, that's, that's one thing, when SF went somewhere. The bar coming up, uh, that that that's always awesome, always awesome hearing about the SF bars coming, coming up.
Yep. Unfortunately, we had a real nice one too. Uh, one B thirty-six was back there when it was out. I don't have any pictures of that. So, um, somewhere, I don't know if any of the team guys I was with were even alive, but uh, looking at this, but I'm sure somebody has pictures, you know, it'd be fun to see.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
And did I um, ask a minute ago or earlier, um, what what would you uh, equate the the training that the Cambodians were getting? Would would it, would you equate it to uh, American Ranger training or just basic training?
It was like basic and then AIT.
Okay.
Basic training and then your advanced infantry training.
Excellent, okay.
And I think, uh, another part, they might have been training some uh, some of the troops on long range. I think that's what Cliff Newman was doing when he stepped on a landmine. Training the long range patrol guys, I believe.
Ah, that that would make sense because it sounded like he was uh, with a smaller group and and out and about not doing what it sounds like you were doing a little bit. It sounds like he was mixing it up a little bit more, shall we say. Uh, and sneaking and peeking, I think would be the the better term. Uh, that's what I was looking for.
There we go, little, little guys. And who is that?
I am not sure on who the American is, unfortunately.
I know, he was on my team. He broke, he was, we were out in the bush and he broke his weapon down and started cleaning it.
Oh.
I said, what are you doing? Pretty sure that was him. Might have to look through the that great Who's Who in FANK.
I'm glad I got that to you because I had forgotten I had it. And I, I, as soon as I, we got hooked up for the show, I was like, I, I wish I would have found it earlier and would have gotten and been able to pick out some names and such, but um.
I'll look through that Who's Who in FANK. And once I see his name, I'll do it.
Excellent.
You know, if I can make out his name tag.
I'll send you uh, I'll, I'll send you the photo when uh, when we get off this, here in a few minutes.
I can, I can still see him breaking that weapon down. I said, what are you doing? Anyway.
That is so crazy. It it is. It's so cool getting to see guys that I know from other places end up with y'all. And I I can't picture them. But or get a name from the other group, but you guys fill in the blank. I, I, it's so nice being able to get names to faces. Um. We have, I can't help but think of the non-indig that got left behind. Um. Oh, last uh, last one here. Uh, Daniel, nice of you to join. I hate you, uh, didn't get in till late. Um, Tired Redneck is curious about, did y'all have any uh, any run-ins with uh, sappers of any sort?
No. When um, one of the teams was on that uh, security team. I guess they were out going over and uh, I guess that where they were got hit with some sappers. But uh, that's the only, we never hit them when I was out on those uh, other ammo dumps and P O Ls.
And uh, for for my closing, as before, we'll get to closing remarks. We're uh, at this time, seventy-one, seventy-two, could you uh, could you see the writing on the wall that it it was coming and it was going to be bad?
Yes, I mean, that Easter Offensive. And they were just rolling down. I think the last, I hate to say last ditch effort. Was sending those teams out to sensitive ammo dumps. Was the last, you know, trying to buff it up as much as you could. But I think they might have known the handwriting was on the wall.
Wow.
Yeah.
We, we had a guest on that was a part of the the Easter Offensive. Uh, I think he got the Contum and fought as long as they could. And they held it off for a little while. And then that next day or week, uh, tanks were coming in and it was uh, bad news bears, bad news. Um, Daniel uh, happened to. Um, Daniel, uh, happened to look and say, he said it was actually the J F K Special Warfare Center School Flash at that time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I have, uh. I have the one from my original break back and it was I M A Flash and I didn't. I know they had a white flash for training group when I went through the recon school. And I think, uh, and the other one. I thought it had some gold in it, but maybe not. He's probably, he's probably right. He's right there.
I think you're, uh, I, I think you probably got the newest one with like a cool, uh. S W C and then like, uh, arrows and, and all kind of cool stuff on it. Uh. But it, it, it's way different than today. I'll, I'll show you that one too. But, um, guys, is there, uh. Uh, a- any more questions that you guys have? I, I know a lot of y'all didn't know about FANQ coming in and I'm still learning. Um, if y'all have any questions, get them to me and maybe, maybe if Mr. Fred is open to, uh, if we get enough questions in and such. We might do a, a Q and A if, if he'd be open to, to, to sharing on FANQ a little bit.
Happy to do it.
Excellent, excellent. Um, is there anything you personally would, would like to say or share, uh, before we shut down for the day?
No, just thank you, bud, for reaching out to all these guys and, you know, listening to the stories. And there's a lot of them out there. But, uh, I know everybody's listening, likes to hear those stories and they go, oh yeah, and that's right. I remember that. I know that guy. And you haven't heard from him in fifty, forty years. It was, uh, it was pretty great. Thank you for doing that.
I've, I, again, I've got to thank you for, for spending time and coming on. And I've got to thank Mr. Keith for going out on a, on a whim and, and, uh. Suggesting you reach out to me or accept my phone call. I, I've got to thank him for that as well on here. Uh, that, that he hooked us up. I, I can't thank him and you enough for, for, uh, helping me out like y'all have been doing.
Our pleasure.
Thank you, thank you. Um, well, guys, we are, uh, we've hit the hour and a half mark. Good, good time. And, uh, if y'all get some questions in, get them in. I'm going to put some of the, the FANQ documents, uh, into the show notes. So y'all can do some little research and, uh, maybe get some questions in. So, uh, Mr. Fred can join us again. So. Uh, that's it for the day. Everyone be safe. Have a wonderful evening or when you're watching this, have a wonderful day. Uh, Mr. Frank, Frank, Mr. Fred, same goes for you. I hope you have a wonderful evening. And I will email this to you, uh, as soon as I get done and finish a few little editorial things.
Okay, thanks, bud.
Yes, sir. And, uh, God bless and thank you again for joining us.